We all ready? It's six thirty, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you everyone for coming. First item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or changes, if they'd be kind enough to share them. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve, please.
Just had a comment for the last section under "What is a fence?" Uh, it looks like the, I don't know if the sentence got cut off there or something like that. It says, uh, Commissioner's talked about non-definition to be able to alter it based on. And I just kinda, I don't know if that's supposed to connect to the second sentence or what.
I'll fix that. We'll bring it back. 'Cause I don't remember. But it does look like I forgot half of it.
Based on the situation, based on circumstances, something like that. Alright, we can hold that over for next meeting. Linda will revise that with whatever was on the tape, so, thanks Linda.
Got you. Uh, go ahead and sit on that and move to our public hearings.
So first tonight, we've got a minor subdivision from Ken Durst and Jan Sborgstrom Durst, and they're unfortunately unable to join us. They're on vacation right now, but, um, I think Ian, you can kind of explain it. There are a couple unique characteristics with this property.
Yeah, so, in my staff report, I did make a recommendation that we table this at this meeting tonight, um, but there are a few things that I'd like to speak through, uh, just so that you're all aware for next time. Um, so essentially, uh, what they're doing, the applicants, they're interested in constructing a manufactured home on a vacant lot, which is right next to another lot which they own that has an existing, uh, structure built on it, a single-family home. It was built in like nineteen hundred or so, so very old house, and of course, it was before our zoning code was established and it was constructed right up to the property line. So through this minor subdivision, what the applicants are hoping to do is to adjust the property lines a bit, just so there's a more of a setback, uh, around that existing structure there. Um, so with that, um, there's a few things that still have to be worked out with the plan. Um, essentially, let's see, I can pull it up here on the map, so we can all see it. So here's the site plan. Uh, the existing structure is here. Here's the proposed location for the manufactured home. Um, basically, the code requirements say that the size of the lot has to be, uh, minimum eight thousand square feet, but right now, they have it at, uh, seven thousand nine hundred and change. Um, and additionally, the building line, uh, measured at this point here has to be a minimum sixty-six feet wide, which they have now indicated as sixty-point-five feet there. Um, so a couple of things with that. Um, I also shared it with our electric department, and they've recommended adding a five-foot utility easement, uh, along Second Street Southwest here and between the shared property lines as well. Um, and then finally, there's, uh, one of the requirements for minor subdivisions in our code states that any assessments have to be paid before, um, before a minor subdivision can be approved, and in this case here, there's two pending assessments that have to do with, uh, the street improvement project. So, a few things to work through there. Um, let's see. So, I am recommending tabling this for the next month, just so we can get these things straightened out a bit better. Um, one thing to add, I think the, the, the minimum square footage can be worked out a bit. I think we can get that up to eight thousand square feet, maybe if you put in a jog back here, something like that. Um, the building line is going to be a bit of an issue since it was sixty-six feet wide to begin with, but now, in order to correct for this, uh, non-compliant structure here, now we're creating a lot that's, um, a bit too narrow. So if the minor subdivision gets approved like this, then we would also have to be comfortable approving a subdivision variance, which are a bit more, uh, they're a bit less stringent than, um, regular variances are. Um, basically, what we would have to find is that there's a special circumstance here with this existing structure to, in order to justify, uh, creating a lot that's smaller than what the code requirements are.
Can they make that lot wider and make the other one narrower? Or is there something that's keeping them from, you know, to get you to sixty-six feet? Could they just take it from the other lot, being they own both lots?
No, because-
No, but it's right on the property line, or it's right on the building, it says.
On that-
Yeah, you can't really see the building.
Yeah, it's kinda hard to see.
Dash line, and you see where the electric meter is. The house is right on the property line.
Oh.
So basically, if they, uh, if they move the line at all, they're gonna be within the sixty-six feet.
Right.
So in essence, they're trying to correct for one problem and sort of creating another one by doing that, so, um, as Ian mentioned, I do think that the lot size, that's probably the smallest concern we have, really. It's, it's fifty square feet short of the, or forty-three square feet short of the, the numbers, so that, that in and of itself, I'm not as concerned about because it's a very small adjustment to their lot line. I mean, they could add ten feet by four and they've got it, you know, on the corner there or something. Um, but to his other point, I think that's probably the bigger issue, is that if we did approve that, we're kind of setting ourselves up. You're basically gonna say, "Well, if we're approving the minor subdivision, we're gonna be approving that variance."
Right.
Right, yeah. It's just one non-conforming lot or another, right?
Sure. And I mean, I think the, the positives to it is, you know, we do see a lot being used. You know what I mean? To me, that's a positive, if they're willing to bring, you know, uh, tax value to the property by saying, "Okay, we're gonna put a lot that's currently not buildable." It is a dense area along Second already, I mean, if you're familiar with it, it's just kind of a, it's kind of a town home area, so I don't think that'd be uncharacteristic for it, and, uh, the zoning does match with modular homes, so it's already, that part of town is already zoned for this kind of style of home. So that is also not something I see, and they are, um, Ian, I didn't say it myself, but Ian mentioned that he did take a look at the, the model. They're looking at putting in a brand-new model, so I know some people are always concerned about that. You know, I know we dealt with one a couple of years ago in sort of southwest Cason, um, where it was not, not a brand-new model. This is a brand-new model. It's something, you know, that's gonna be a very nice unit, I think, overall, and, um, so anyways-
Yeah, and one other thing I didn't mention here, but this, uh, showed up on the survey. This is an overhead electric line, which the electric department indicated would be a bit too close to that structure here, so that was one of the recommendations for adding in the easements, 'cause they would, uh, you know, move this line so it goes underground within the easement along here before connecting to both houses. So typically, they don't, uh, run these overhead lines across, uh, lots like that, but I think, you know, they just did it in this case because at this point, or currently, and when the point, when it was done, both lots were owned by the same person, so just extending this line across this lot to get to this house maybe wasn't as much of an issue now, but with the intention to put in this manufactured home here and then sell it off, you know, that creates an issue that we can solve through this minor subdivision as well.
If, uh, if we were to change the lot to sixty-point-five like they want, would that change our lots in all town? Would we have to allow a sixty-foot lot anywhere in town, or is this a one?
Well, we'd be varying from the code. In this case, you'd be allowing for a variance. I do think that's some, that's probably, probably, sort of a bigger conversation is, with, a lot of communities have gone to a little bit smaller lot requirements because there's this focus on increased density, especially in the metro, not so much out in the interstate, obviously, but if you look at Minneapolis or St. Paul, a lot of those communities are down to like five thousand square feet per lot, which is a pretty small lot, but they're encouraging people to build a three-plex on a single-family home, and you've probably heard about that, like in Minneapolis and St. Paul, that's kind of the thing, so, so not every community has that requirement to have eight thousand square feet. In fact, uh, you know, a lot of towns, it's a lot smaller than that. You know, if you go into a lot of new construction in different parts of the country, it's seventy-five-hundred or something like that. So, I think that's a bigger argument or bigger discussion, but, but to your original point, I don't think that doing a small variance, I mean, if you just make it sixty-one feet, that gets you at your number, 'cause it'd be sixty, you'd be adding half a foot times thirty, a hundred and thirty-one, so you'd be adding another, you know, sixty-five feet or whatever, so-
Right, but then we'd end it, then we'd still have two non-conforming lots, right? 'Cause we don't meet the setback on the-
I need a lot.
Lot on the right side?
Yeah.
So I guess the question is, is-
If that's at sixty, sixty, six-point-seven-seven, so if they moved it over, that's a good question. So if they moved it over another quarter of a foot, 'cause that would put it at six-point-five, so what's point-two-seven times a hundred and thirty-one, point-four-eight, be like a quarter of that?
So what is it?
It'd be pretty close to the eight thousand, 'cause I mean, six and a half is their requirement, right?
Yeah, I mean-
So I mean, I think with a-
The eight thousand-
We, they could probably make it to that point, it'd be very close.
I'm not too worried about the eight thousand, it's the overall width one that's sixty-
But if you're already adding a quarter of an, a quarter of a foot, so now you're at six and a quarter feet instead of six and a half feet on the other lot.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, is, is it, is it better to have the old house built on the property line and just leave it like that, or is it better to fix that side setback and then have a lot that's narrower than it should be?
My, I mean, that's up to you guys to discuss, obviously. I mean, my preference would be have two lots that are better than they are now. I think getting one lot off of the property line would be ideal, 'cause I think if it was me, I would much rather have, you know, twelve feet off of the house, you know, between the two, as opposed to having one that's on the property line only six and a half, you know what I mean? That would make more sense to me, but that's one of the reasons that, obviously, Ian's bringing it to the planning commission for your feedback, I think.
Yeah, and, and once they've become different owners, and then with this property, if it went up right up to the property line, you know, if they ever wanted to paint that side of the wall or do any maintenance on that side of the house, they wouldn't be able to do that without, you know, trespassing on this property here, so this minor subdivision would correct for that issue if it ever came, came up going forward, so.
And was this, this, uh, property line movement, was this, is this what the owners are proposing? Like, they want to move it, or is this something that you've recommended that they do in order to go forward with this?
Um- Asking if this was their plat application?
Yeah, well, yes, they submitted it like this.
Okay, so, so they wanted to make their, their own lot narrower, is what, what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
They were more concerned with leaving the house as a non-conforming use then, because if anything happened to it, they wouldn't be able to rebuild it there, so they wanted to bring it into compliance, so it's not non-conforming.
Okay.
I mean, even if they just moved that quarter of a foot, so there's six and a half on the one side, you're, you're up to seventy-nine-ninety, so you're, you're ten feet short of the, uh, the lot size requirement then, so like I said, I, I think that's where we'd say it's probably okay. We'd probably do a variance.
Yeah, it'd have to be variance either way, so.
Right, it's true.
Or change in code.
In this case, I think a variance is appropriate because we don't run into this that often, so.
Yeah, and we wouldn't, we're making the special case that this one's a non-conforming use that we're correcting for, so, but we just have to be comfortable making that decision for this one and going forward if it ever comes up. But like I said, we can't approve the minor subdivision without also approving a variance, so, just wanted to make that clear.
Understood.
Understood. Uh, any other questions or comments? Do we wanna go through the public hearing process, or do we wanna table that as well?
Uh, I think we'll go through the public hearing. It was noticed, so I mean, we can do the public hearing and then we can move through the rest of the issues. That way, we don't have to do it again next meeting.
Sure. Well, we will go ahead and open things up for public comment. If either of you have anything you'd like to comment on the Durst subdivision, uh, by all means come up to the podium and share your name and address, please. If not, we will go ahead and close the, the public hearing. Uh, request from the city is to table this one, sir?
Yes.
Guess I would motion we table this until the next meeting.
I'll second that, then.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be our recommendation, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, next up, we've got a conditional use permit for a fence, Mr. Tim Morton.
Alright, so, just scroll through the right spot here in the packet, so, uh, in my staff report, I've indicated that this fence was, uh, built, already built, uh, prior to receiving a conditional use permit, so, uh, the applicants have applied for a conditional use permit retroactively. Um, you can see here, this is on, uh, Fifth Street Northwest, on the corner of Fifth Street Northwest and Manorville Avenue. Um, it's a privacy fence and it's a corner lot here, so basically, they've just have it extending from this side of their house, uh, down, uh, close to the sidewalk and then over to their driveway and then back up to the, their garage there. Um, so this is allowed under our, our recent, uh, ordinance change to allow privacy fences within front yards. Um, it's not in contact with any other neighboring properties, so there's no recommendation for, uh, uh, any, uh, access agreements to be notarized, so, um, basically, just approving the conditional use permit at this point.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments? Uh, if not, this is also a public hearing. If either of you have anything you would like to share as it pertains to Mr. Tim Morton's, uh, request for a conditional use permit, by all means, come up to the podium. If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Forgive the sarcasm, but the cricket in the back.
Yeah.
Forgive my, my poor sense of humor. Um, you know, this one's pretty straightforward in my mind. It doesn't really butt up against any neighboring property. Not a big fan of doing these things retroactively, but-
But in this case, I will say that the, the applicants were very understanding, they just didn't know, but once I presented them with the issue, they were very forthcoming with completing the application, so, yeah.
So you were the one that brought it to their attention?
I did send a letter, yes.
Okay. That was after Paul told me, and I went to talk to him after church on Sunday, and then I told Ian to send a letter, so. I mean, but that's good, because I mean, I don't always see everything, so if you guys are driving around and you see something coming up, I mean, at least it's retroactive, at least it'll be good now, going forward. We don't wanna set a standard where we just let things go, so.
Lot looks like it has setback issues too.
Unless there's any questions or comments, I would look for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second it. You can second it.
Thank you, Brandon. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be our recommendation on Mr. Morton's, uh, conditional use permit.
Thank you.
And one more, we've got one here for a Ms. Clark and Mr. Honbeck, another conditional use permit for a fence.
Yep, so this one's a chain-link fence, rather, in the backyard. Um, got it up here on the map, basically, it just extends from the rear of their house towards the back and then back up to the neighboring property to the north, so just one neighbor that it comes into contact with here. Um, there is a five-foot utility easement back here, and so, you know, I've got the two standard, uh, conditions with approving this one, just that they're acknowledging that they're putting it in the utility easement and can be destroyed at the owner's expense, and then also just this access easement agreement to the property with the north.
There's, there's nothing on the west, or is it off the property line?
Uh, it would be off the property line there.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? No. Once again, this is a public hearing. If you have anything you would like to share, if you'd be kind enough to come up to the podium? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The process is working, so, once again, I, I have no, no issues or concerns unless anyone else does. Now, I look for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be our recommendation to the city council. You've got two more items on here that you've requested to be tabled. Is there any discussion to be had there, or are we just going to-
Uh, nope, nope, just, uh, no discussion tonight, they're just gonna be on the agenda for next, next, uh, next meeting.
Understood. So with that said, we're moving on signs placed in easements. Oh, we, oh, okay, so forgive me, that's-
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
Uh, can I do them simultaneously?
Yeah.
So we've got a preliminary plat and a zoning amendment here. Uh, do we want public hearings with these things, without any details?
You know, I guess the reason for tabling, maybe you can explain that, Ian.
Yeah, so I, I published the public hearings for these ones before we technically had complete, uh, submissions, which was an error on my part, but, uh, we do have complete submissions now at least, so, uh, though, that's the reason for the tabling.
I guess I wouldn't feel comfortable having a-
Yeah, and sometimes we get people that say, "Oh, we need it, need it now," and, I mean, publish it out of abundance of caution, but I guess it might not have been quite ready yet, so.
Too hasty, yeah.
What was the difference, they had an issue with the, was it a different plat, or?
Uh, they hadn't paid for them.
Oh, okay.
So they didn't get their review in yet, but payment has been received now, so can move forward.
Understood. Uh, but we do need a motion to, uh, table the preliminary plat and zoning amendment for the Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting Project.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion to table it, do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that would be-
So that'll be, that'll be tabled, that, those public hearings will be tabled in Texas our next meeting, which, just for the record, would be on the ninth of October, scheduled for the ninth of October, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
With that said, we're on to our discussion on signs placed in easements.
Yep, so, uh, I've written my memo here, it's in the packet. Um, basically, we got a request from our neighbors across the street to the south there. Um, basically, they just wanted to put up a, a ground sign, um, but the issue is that they're proposing to place it within a rather large easement that extends, uh, in front of their property, as you can see, I've got the picture here from the plat map. So it's a, it's a forty-foot utility easement is what it is, which is very uncommon, very uncharacteristic, um, so with that, um, in our code, it does specifically say that, you know, signs can't be placed in easement, within easements, so, I'm not able to approve the building permit application as it is right now, but, um, just wanted to run through a couple of options with you guys tonight and see if there's any sort of guidance on how to move forward with this. Um, basically, what the options are, just to say, you know, "Sorry altogether," and say, "You have to place your sign so it's without, so it's not within that easement." Um, we could take a look at, um, changing the code in some way that, um, allows for signs to be placed in easements. Um, we could say that there, that that could happen through, you know, staff approval, like if the zoning administrator and public works director approve the location based on what the easement is being used for, or else we could also consider, um, processing a variance request for this one, but we'd have to be justifying that this easement is unique enough and it justifies the need for a variance because their request is reasonable and, you know, wouldn't affect the, the, the local character in any way.
So do we know why there's a forty-foot utility easement there?
There's, uh, according to the, the utilities map, there are some, uh, lines that do come kinda towards the end of that easement. I'm not sure why they were placed there specifically, but I did share it with the, the water and electric supervisors, and generally, they weren't opposed to the locations of the signs, just so long as they called and locate before constructing, to make sure that they weren't actually interfering with the easement.
Cause I mean- You look at the original plat, you can see east of this lot, there was actually a, a platted road that would've been heading, I don't know why they had it in there, but our platted easement, a utility easement to the east as well, so it's interesting, if you follow the plat, um, maybe you could bring that up for them to see, actually, Ian. So if you go up, you know, going along Fifth Street Southeast, you see the easement start to get wider and wider and wider, and so I don't know, you know, historically why that was done that way, but it, it goes from like a thirty-foot, or, you know, twenty-foot to a thirty-foot, to a thirty-five-foot, and in front of this property, it's a forty-foot easement, so I would imagine at some time or another, they were anticipating some more heavy-duty lines that would go in there, probably for electric. Either that, or it would've been some kind of a sewer main that would've required more, more width.
Would, would, uh, the engineer be able to look at that and determine if it's something we could just change the utility easement and make it a smaller easement? Cause that would be, in my mind, the easiest, instead of trying to change a variance. If we could change, if there's no reason to be forty feet, then would we be better off to change it?
Well, I don't know that we would wanna change the easement. I think what we would have them do is we would let them know that they can make a request to, to revise the easement.
Sure.
And then we could take a look at that. I mean, and, like I said, it's, it's interesting, if you go up like where the vet is, I mean, they've got a ten-foot utility easement, and then, like I said, it starts to widen out. On the, on the, the city side, on city hall side, it's all ten-foot along the north side of that.
Right.
Um, and, like I said, I'm imagining it's because of the electric line, and you can see the line that goes out.
Yeah, you could, yeah, this line here is, is the issue, and forty feet comes out, like, pretty much to the, where it starts to become gravel here, so, you know, there would be-
At this point, you know, we wouldn't wanna change the easement, because you've got an electric line right there.
Sure.
Now, these signs, you know, I imagine, do we know what the width and height is in these, that sort of thing? Um, I didn't include it in the packet, but, let's see, cause I mean, I guess the question would be, do we, are we as concerned about having a sign inside of it, if it's an electric line that's above it?
But if it's not that tall, if I-
That's what I mean, if it's not that tall, it's probably not a big of an issue.
It's eight feet nine inches tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that would be an issue.
Obviously, a lot taller than that.
Yeah.
So.
But it only goes, goes one foot underground, the sign.
Right, yeah.
And it's still got, like, thirty feet of space between those two electric lines, it looks like.
Yeah, cause the electric lines are-
Underground.
They're under.
Electric line underground?
Well, there's overhead power and then-
That's overhead power. On, oh, the one.
You said there's two lines there, actually, so.
They're both overhead.
Yeah.
I mean, part of it is that line that's overhead goes, it goes south and it goes down into the, the south side of the, the highway there, so that's part of the reason is, that's probably an oversized feeder line, and that's one of the reasons they would have a wider easement, I would imagine.
Yep, that makes sense, I was just-
Yeah, no, I, I got you, I mean, I, I'd be honest with you, I didn't handle this one as much as Ian did, so I don't, I didn't do a lot of the research.
I was just curious too, I mean, if, if they're, how high they are compared to a nine-foot sign.
If you wanna click on that lot, Ian, and actually bring up the plat, they can take a look at the plat.
Yeah, I can do that.
That might be beneficial, too. Yeah, so you can see, as it goes from the west, those easements get larger, and then on the, on the east side of this lot here, you've got that easement between those two, and that's where that line, that, that feeder line drops down between up by the, um, goes over by where the implement dealership and the stuff on the south side is. So I would imagine that it's probably because it's a feeder line, that's why they give them a space. So it, it probably isn't ideal to actually make it a smaller easement, but-
But it'd be something that, like you say, maybe public works and engineer could look at and determine if, knowing the size of the sign and the size of all, they could look at everything and then kinda give us a recommendation.
I mean, I guess the other, the other question is, do we just, I mean, if you look at like the city sign, for example, you know, when you guys come up, you can drive up, that's well outside of any easement, so it's still quite visible. I mean, is it problematic for them just to move it outside of the easement and put a sign up?
Unless it affects where they're parking at.
Right, it, it, it would, because, I mean, let's see, if I can measure it out here, so it's-
We, are there any future plans to underground these lines?
Well, I think the one line is underground already, so I think there's one overhead, so you see there's one overhead and there's one that's underground there that comes-
Well, I was kinda, I thought I was seeing two shadows there, so I don't know if there's two overhead lines.
I'd have to review that. As far as I know, they probably wouldn't be messing with the feeder line because of the cost of underground.
Yeah.
Pretty substantial to, to do that.
Well, if it gets knocked down in a storm, you might as well underground it at that point, then, huh?
Well, it's certainly would be a consideration if it was knocked down in a storm, right?
Ah, nice. Okay, so that's, that's about forty foot right there.
So, it'd put it right under building.
Well, under the car.
The parking area.
Yeah, the building is over there.
Or the building over there, yeah?
Yeah, so, unless they stayed farther west, where the easement isn't 40 feet.
Well, it's, it's 40 feet across the whole...
Across the whole thing?
Across their whole lot, though.
Even though the line, go ahead.
Even though the line's, yep.
Propose sign illuminated as well?
Uh, I believe it's lit up, but not, like...
Not an electric sign, it's lit up.
Not, not, yeah, it's not an electric sign, but...
They'd still need some, some power for an external light source.
Right, so it'd have to be, well, I guess it could do solar, too, or something, but, yeah, I don't know what their, what their choice would be there.
I still think that we'd have the city staff, the engineer, and public works look at it and kind of determine what they think is most viable for the spot and come back.
Sure, well, we certainly can.
Because they're, they're going to look at every aspect of everything on it, and...
And, I mean, the big question would be for, for Jared, and for, you know, electrical engineer, that he would probably work with to see what is really possible.
Yeah.
I would say, my preference tend, would tend, generally speaking, to not put signs in easements.
Right.
That would be where I would say we typically should fall, but in this case, if we can adjust that easement some, I mean, that's, that's a possibility, and we can try to check into that. Have you had that conversation with Jared at all?
Uh, not about adjusting the easement, no.
Or what kind of width he really needs there?
Yeah, I'm not...
No, I think when this originally was built, you know, they weren't sure of what the, the growth pattern would look like here, either, you know, and if Fifth Street Southeast did continue on in a, in a industrial or commercial kind of setup, you'd want to have that heavy-duty power, three-phase, so.
So, do we think this is a unique enough situation to qualify for a variance?
I would say no, because, I mean, going forward, you'd, you'd have that same plat going to the e, I mean, you have it wider along a number of lots here, and you'd have it wider along going east, too, if it was platted out further, because like, it depends on the, the development, you know, if it was commercial, you'd want to have that wide, heavy-duty, three-phase power, so, but, I don't know. The first step maybe is to talk to the electric department, see what they say, you know, if that could be reduced, then, I'm not as concerned about it, because I don't think the sign would be jutting into the, if it's overhead that we're worried about, that probably isn't a big deal. The, the low ground is probably a bigger issue.
Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know. What do you think, Ian?
Uh, I mean, it's fine if we get the, the electric department to sign off on it, but if they say no, then their answer is just, uh, "Sorry, but you can't put your sign in the easement." We don't want to consider, we wouldn't want to consider a variance request, or, you know, changing the code in some way to make an exception with staff approval. Okay, all right, yep, understood. Okay.
That's my two cents.
All right. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, so, okay. I can work with that, yep.
Thank you, pardon me.
No, it's all right, thank you.
Uh, any more discussion on easements and signs? If not, we've got one more discussion, nuisance ordinance and native landscaping statute.
Yeah, so, the state recently adopted a new, a statute that basically allows property owners to have natural managed landscapes in their yards, um, so I've included in your packets a list, or, not a list, but a, a copy of the entire statute there, um, but basically, just comparing it to our own code, I mean, our, our own code doesn't explicitly ban these like natural managed landscapes, um, so it doesn't need to be amended in that respect, however, maybe there's something that could be done about the code, the way it is written right now, because right now, it's, it's not very clear about what, what some of the various terms mean, you know, it says like, uh, like any weeds or tall grass growing on a property are considered a nuisance, but, you know, it doesn't say, you know, how tall is tall, that type of thing, you know, what's a weed? I mean, it hasn't come up yet where I've responded to a complaint about weeds or tall grass, and it turns out to be a naturally managed landscape, something like that. Hasn't happened yet, but that's not to say it couldn't happen. On the opposite end of that, I haven't had a, like an overgrown turf lawn be complained about, and then have, then I send out a letter notifying them that they have to clean it up, and then I get a response that's like, "This is a natural landscape, I'm protected under state statute." That hasn't happened yet either.
Yet.
Uh, yet, however, that's not to say that, that it couldn't happen at some point, so, some cities, I've done a little bit of research into this, and some cities actually have, like, uh, uh, natural landscape permits, where they have to actually, you know, show the design of what their lawn looks like, and have a whole, you know, list of plants, and have a maintenance plan, and then it gets approved by the city and all of that, so, um, what, just one thing there. So, we could consider just copying and pasting the entire state statute in, or we could simply make a reference to it in our code, or, you know, we could leave the code how it is, but, you know, just for my sake, or whatever, then I'll just have to refer to the state statute whenever, whenever it becomes applicable, so.
It's always nice to have whatever, if the state statute is what we're going to go by, it's nice to have it in there, one way or another.
Okay.
Because I don't want to say, "This," and then now you've got to go look it up yourself, you want it easily accessible for anybody.
That makes sense.
You know, I mean, I was quite surprised to hear, though, that it says your turf grass lawn can be no taller than eight inches. That's, that's pretty tall grass, if you think about it.
And we typically restrict it to...
I don't think my grass has grown that much all year.
Uh, I usually just take a look at, I just, it's kind of a judgment call, really, because I don't know, I don't have anything to...
Yeah, it's eight inches of butt, or it goes to seed. Well, mine will go to seed before eight inches.
This year's an exceptional year, like you said, I think I've mowed three times, and that's been all it's ever needed, because it hasn't grown at all, so it's pretty sad.
I've mowed a couple more.
Pretty sad, pretty dry, but, uh...
Is it fair to say that nobody at City Hall wants to go through a permitting and approval process on this particular pursuit? Is that something we really want to manage?
Um, I don't know that it's completely necessary, I mean, I think if you go out there, I think I could tell the difference between a naturally managed landscape compared to someone who just let their lawn grow tall, I think, I think that's a distinction that I could make fairly well, and be able to apply the state statute if needed.
So, yeah, I don't know if you want to copy the whole state one in there, or put a reference, I think it'd be nice if it was in there, people could read it, if they really...
Right, I mean, I think it's just good for him to, like you said, have transparency and say, "This is what we're going by, this is what the state said."
Yeah.
And I mean, it's not difficult, it wouldn't be difficult for us to have a hearing and just kind of find a good spot to put in the code and add it in, yeah.
If we copy in the state statute, do we need to maintain it in case the state statute changes?
Um, I think usually, you put a line in there that says, like, "As may be amended from time to time," something like that, so if the state ever did change it, then...
Then we need to keep up with it.